I hereby call the October 6, 2025, regular meeting of the Town Council of Watertown. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and truly public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Ken Demirz.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony Devona.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Karina Noid.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Sue, you didn't give me the forms. Thank you. Mr. Mickel.
Hal Mickel, 95 Woodbine Avenue. I have a bunch of stickies here that I wanted to go over tonight. So I'm going to pick out one that I'm most interested in. It's item I on the agenda tonight, which is the 070 account for recreation special events. Now, I'm a student of the budget and special accounts, but I don't know 070 accounts. Now, I don't expect the Town Council to answer this question, but I'm hoping somebody in the administration can. I've got a lot more time. I can talk about a few more things, but basically, I would like to know about the 070 accounts. Thank you.
Catherine Camara.
Hi. So at one of the last meetings, I had questioned whether or not the seniors were going to get bus transportation to vote on the 16th. You know, I didn't get any answer here, but I got an answer that confused me when someone told me, an elderly woman told me, that she voted on Monday. And I said, oh, how did you vote on Monday? Well, apparently, the senior bus, she had something else to do, and then the bus brought her here, and she was told she could do an absentee vote. Now, I will tell you exactly what an absentee voter can vote, how they're allowed to vote. Connecticut has strict laws regarding who can vote absentee. Are you an active member of the Armed Forces of the United States? Will you be out of town on Election Day? Does sickness prevent you from voting in person on Election Day? Do your religious beliefs prevent you from performing secular activities like voting on Election Day? Will you be performing duties as an election official at a polling place other than your own on Election Day? And does a physical disability prevent you from voting in person on Election Day? That's it. Those are the only things that qualify for an absentee ballot. So not having transportation is not one of the qualifications. Yet this elderly woman voted absentee with our town clerk, and when she said, well, I don't fit any of these, she was told to pick one. So now the question becomes, did her ballot count? Was that vote counted? Was it just tossed aside? And this is a voting irregularity. And on the S E E C website, it says you should report irregularities. So I guess I need to report that, because we'll have a couple of things from Watertown at the S E E C. So I'm very disappointed that an elderly, that this happened to somebody, and it shouldn't, and our town clerk should know better. I really can't believe that that happened. So I guess I'm going to have to report it. Thank you.
Wait a minute. Can I? I just thought I would make sure I understand. The bus wasn't available to bring her on Tuesday, so it brought her on Monday? Is that what you're telling us?
It brought her here on Monday.
On Monday, instead of...
And said she could do an absentee ballot.
Okay.
But I just read you the only things that are allowed in Connecticut.
No, I understand that part. I just wasn't sure how she ended up.
Yeah. So no one got a ride on Tuesday because the bus wasn't running on Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those seem to be the only two forms we have, so I'll close public participation. Do we have a motion for the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8, 2025, special meeting.
Do we have a motion and a second? Are there any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to accept the September 15, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections?
Yes. Page four, my name is spelled wrong twice.
Did you give the correction? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Anyone else?
No.
All those in favor of the motion as corrected.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining?
I abstain.
One abstention. The motion passes unanimously. Under Chairman's report, before we begin the correspondence discussion, I wanted to read to you an email that we received that I think is important. The gentleman says, "I'm writing to you to tell you how terrific Lauren Dayton in the manager's office has been to me. Being a retiree, I am always asking questions about health insurance, et cetera, and Lauren is patient, knowledgeable, and a great asset to the town of Watertown. In these days when people complain, I want to say thank you." And it was sent by a Tony Montenegro. Another email we received was relative to 169 Main Street, the Blight, and I will let the Town Manager address that issue.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just, you know, 169 Main Street is the building that's next to the Masonic Lodge on Main Street, just north of Hitchcock Funeral Home. There's a large hole in the roof. That building has been deteriorating for some time. The building official and the town attorney have been working with the owner to get the house taken down. Those negotiations have broke down. Today, we actually fenced off the property. We've sent out certified letters to not only the homeowner, but the lien holders in an attempt to get the building down. We have a 10-day hold on the property. At that point, the town will take that down, and we will lien the property. It is a safety concern, so we're going to move as quickly as possible to get the building down. All utilities have been disconnected from the building, from what I was told, so other than just the structure collapsing, all other safety issues have been taken care of.
Right. Anybody have any questions?
Through the chair. I'm assuming no one's living in the building?
It has not been, it's been not inhabited since, it's been at least a year. We had closed it off, and we posted it as no trespassing, but we were working with the person who owns it to try and get them to take care of the property. So no, it's not inhabited.
Anybody else? Thank you. And lastly, under Chairman's report, you may have noticed the photos of the various councils on the wall that start back in 1985. Lisa Catania from Mark's office spent a lot of time and effort to find the appropriate way to show all of those to fit in the space so they would be uniform at a reasonable price, and I think she did a great job. We have one or two more to add, but the paper's a little too thick. There of the change in how the photos were taken that matched the ones on the back wall. And once those are copied and can fit in, then we will extend it a few more years. But she did a very nice job. Okay. Staff reports. Town Manager.
Madam Chairwoman, I've included a report regarding the banned financing schedule and related updates, which will include City of Waterbury, the Fire District, the RFP for actually looking at the, an RFQ for understanding what the water and sewer system is worth so that the council can work through that process. And also, we've come to an understanding on how to move forward with the paving bond. It kind of goes through that. Most importantly, we've already gone through our SMP rating review on the first page. If you move to the second page, October 7 tomorrow, we should get a response from the SMP giving us our rating review for us to then move through the end of October, which we anticipate that will be funded with the bonds, our bans, and that funding will be in our, in our bank accounts. We've been coordinating with the City of Waterbury. I know there was a question from one of the council members in regards to whether Waterbury actually applied the payment as we have asked. They have not. We have set a meeting for tomorrow for our finance director to sit down with their finance director and actually work through this. I did speak with the mayor, who had stated to me that there was enough ambiguity in the law that they feel that we could come up with some agreement. So we plan to work through that tomorrow. If not, Watertown will be prepared to make a significant payment, holding back what we feel may not be appropriately applied to the Waterbury payment as we work through those, the process with Waterbury. We've had, I don't, I'm a little mixed up on time. I believe we spoke that Watertown Fire District and the town has had a meeting. We have provided them with all the documentation. Attorney Jessel has reached out to the Fire District's attorney, asking if they've had, if they have all the information they've requested. We're still waiting a response, and then we will schedule our next meeting to sit down and see if we can move that forward as well. Just as a reminder, we included, or we put aside $2.8 million in cash reserves, and that's to offset the budgetary shortfall in this year's budget. We'll continue to expense, we haven't expensed any of that money yet, but as we move further into the budget, until revenue starts to increase through the rate increases, we'll take from that, those monies. So we anticipate that in this time next year, when we actually go out to bond, there'll be monies left in those reserves to apply towards the bonding as well. I've asked WSA to provide us accounting, and we're going to keep a close look on that as we move through the next few months and as revenue starts to increase through the rate increases. As directed last meeting, on September 15, I moved a memo to Chairman Sugden, asking them, the WSA, to review the Westgate properties and to have a meeting to discuss a blended rate for those customers so that they are not seeing a 200% increase. They've received that memo, and I would expect that it'll be at the next, they'll have a discussion at the next WSA meeting on that topic. We have a full RFP for an RFQ, so a request for proposal, for requests for qualifications developed. We'll be having that sent out by the end of the month to look for a firm to actually help us identify the... Sorry, something just flew into my eye. A company help us to evaluate our system so that we can make better decisions as we move forward in that evaluation of selling the system. Road improvement and bond allocations. So initially, we were going to go after the full $10 million upfront. After discussions with bond counsel, we found ourselves with all the projects that are going to be hitting over the next '26, '27, and '28 calendar years. We want to make sure that we are prudent in the issuance of these bonds and that we can get the work done. After talking with bond counsel, he advised us, or I'm sorry, with Barry Barnaby, our bond manager, he advised it to be of best interest for us to take $6 million on the first bond, band, and then we would take the second band in our bond in 2028. And the reason for that, it's a very peculiar situation in which we may be taking these bands out in the 3% range, and we could actually earn 4% on the money as it sits in our accounts. Their advice was, we don't want to trigger any audit by IRS by looking as though we're trying to borrow money to make money, and we kind of want to stick within that three-year timeframe. So Mr. Lukowski is definitely working on a plan to ensure that we can get these projects done, and then we'll move forward in 2028 to go for that second round and continue to improve the roads. There's also next steps in here, and it just kind of summarizes the document that I've given you.
Am I recalling correctly that we want to make the payment to Waterbury before next month so that we don't incur next month's interest?
That's correct. That'll be part of our discussion tomorrow. As we anticipate that the funds will be placed into our account on the 28th of October, we would move forward with a payment, you know, on the 29th, 30th, or 31st, depending on how our meeting goes tomorrow.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Through the chair.
Chair.
Mark, I'm sorry, you mentioned a budgetary shortfall of $2.2 million, and then I got confused. I wasn't sure what, what exactly was that in reference to? Was that, does that have to do with the water and sewer?
It does. So when we budgeted for the '25, '26 budget for water and sewer, we went at the current rates that were, we were currently paying, which created that shortfall.
Oh, right.
We put aside $2.8 million so that we could draw off that to make sure that we could stay current. We anticipate, we've had a very dry few months, not that I want to, you know, jinx us, but that'll be to our benefit to have monies left over so that we could apply it next October.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Our Finance Director, Mrs. Greer.
Good evening, Honorable Chairwoman and council members. I just wanted to update you on what's to come over the next few months for the Finance Department. First, I know the approvals were done for the transfers for fiscal year '24, '25 for the salary line items. However, the general expenses will need to still be approved, which I'll have for you at the next meeting scheduled on the 20th. My plan is also to have, as promised, the quarterly reports available for you by department, which I'm intending to have for you on the 20th. I'm currently working with George Cinnamon on meeting, to plan our timeline for the submission of our '24, '25 audit. We anticipate a quicker turnaround, but I will keep you updated on a plan and progress. Finally, to add to what the Town Manager had said in regards to Karina Noid's question, we did look at their payment when it came in. They did not apply it correctly, but I just want to assure you that the second payment we made was according to what we also felt was due, written with the statute and how we wanted it applied. So our meeting tomorrow, I'm hoping, will clarify what the amount should be. We have all the backup and what we put in writing, so I just think an in-person meeting will be important to get everything clear, but I'll also keep you updated on the progress of the payment and what's decided.
Would you be able to answer without research? And if you need research, say so, the question that arose during public participation with regard to special events?
Special... Oh, that's 70, that's our, that is our special accounts. They're considered special, our capital, part of our capital lines. So I can look into it and get the specific information that he's looking for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We didn't have any subcommittee meetings that I'm aware of. We're going on to new business, so this would be the time, if you want to make your, add to the agenda.
I make a motion to add to the agenda discussion and possible action on creating a commission to investigate what led to the water and sewer lawsuit, why it happened, and to come up with recommendations for preventing similar situations in the future.
That would be item K. All those in favor, do we have a second? I second. All those in favor of adding it to the agenda, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Excuse me. Karina has one, too. I have one as well.
You have what?
One motion.
Okay.
I move to add to the agenda discussion and possible action to form a committee of citizens of the town to oversee the spending of bonded funds, to be sure that the original intent of the funds does not become unclear over the course of 20 years. Committee members must be unelected and approved unanimously by consent of the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
That would be item L. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. One, two, three. How do you vote?
Four.
Okay. So Gary?
I voted for.
All right. So the motion passes. All right. Move on to item...
If it's a tie, it passes.
I beg your pardon?
That's three versus four.
Oh, I didn't count myself.
Item A.
I move to appoint John Nydrin, 567 Sunnyside Avenue, Phil, to move from his alternate member to a regular member of the Board of Appeals to fill an unexpired term for Ron Russ.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to set a special town meeting to be held on October 20, 2025, at 6:30 at the Town Council chambers to consider authorizing an appropriation of $3,019,560 from the General Fund to secure funding of a reimbursement grant under the State of Connecticut, Transportation Alternatives Federal Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, State Project 153-125. Reimbursement will be received in the amount of $2,382,240, with the Town Greenway Project to be built, a segment of 10-12 feet wide, multi-use trail along Steel Brook, beginning at French Street and ending at Unico Field.
I think you skipped a sentence.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where, oh, $2,382,240 with the, with the town's municipal share of $637,320. The grant is for the construction of Steel Brook Greenway Project to be built, a segment of 10 to 12 feet wide, multi-use trail along Steel Brook, beginning at French Street and ending at Unico Field.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize the Town Manager to execute a construction engineering and inspection agreement between the town and Wesson and Sampson Engineers for the inspection of Steel Brook Greenway Project, State Project Number 153-125.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Second. Second.
Second.
I thought, I thought I heard a second. I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize the Town Manager to execute a project authorization letter with the State of Connecticut for the construction portion of the Steel Brook Greenway, State Project Number 153-125.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $8,007 for the Joanna Hayes Communications Grant to Account 262-503-2051100009062 for the purchase and installation of 60-foot wooden utility poles at Black Rock Diam in Judd Farm Road for Communication Upgrade Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of $24,744.08 to line item 010-5055002032369010. New police cars, 2025, for the purchase of a replacement patrol vehicle and associated equipment for the Watertown Police Department due to a motor vehicle accident. Funds anticipated, anticipated from the town's insurance carrier.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I understand the check came in today, so it's not anticipated money. We have it on, we have it on hand. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of $27,450.92 to line item 010-5055002032369010. New police cars, 2020, 2025, 2026, to cover remaining cost above insurance payment for the patrol replacement vehicle and associated equipment due to the motor vehicle accident.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Was, why was there so much of a cost above and beyond insurance proceeds?
That's easy. The value of the vehicle was a long way from the cost to replace it.
So... Oh, the val, oh, yeah. It's an older, okay. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
I move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $1,682.22 from the General Fund to police overtime, line item 010-501300200009010. Funds received from the State of Connecticut from, for Homeland Security activities.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $1,396 from the special funds Recreation, special events for the purchase of iPads to be used for assisting community programs and special events. Funds received from a grant from Thomaston Savings Foundation.
Do we, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move, I move to approve a resolution authorizing the payment of tax refunds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of paying tax refunds?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The first motion, could you read it again, please?
Yep. I make a motion for discussion and possible action on creating a commission to investigate what led to the water and sewer lawsuit, why it happened, and to come up with recommendations for preventing similar situations in the future.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Yes.
Question. What is commission be made up of?
Well, that was something I thought we could discuss. I wasn't quite sure what made sense. I mean, I do think it should be citizens from the town, but then I don't know if it makes sense to have members of the Town Council or water and sewer. So I thought that's why I wanted to bring it up for discussion and see what people thought.
Do you think you might reconsider making a motion when you have a structure to go along with it?
Yeah, I would be amenable to that.
Okay. So we could table the motion at this time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I do have one quick question, comment. At the end of the day, with the water and sewer lawsuit, it came down to, we received an invoice, we disagreed with it, we didn't pay the full amount, they sued. I don't think there's any question in that aspect, so I'm not sure what more we're going to gain from additional investigation. Because if we have another vendor or town or whoever, we run into the same scenario. A decision will need to be made, you know, is this proper, is it not? Is there room for negotiation, whatever the... you know, is this proper, is it not, is there room for negotiation, whatever the case may be. But I'm not sure if we're going to get really any more information on what the initial cause was.
Right, yeah, no, that makes sense. I, I mean, I think I was thinking more, obviously, of just how to prevent something like this from happening in the future, although, I mean, it does certainly seem like it's a fairly unique situation, but I just know a lot of people in town have asked about sort of the process and the decision-making. I know a lot of people have commented online and said things like, "We should have had a vote," which I don't think is probably technically correct according to the charter, but it just seems like there's so much public sentiment.
Unfortunately, the council didn't get to vote on it, that was done by the Water and Sewer Authority.
Right, exactly.
But if you want to bring the motion back with maybe more structure as to how you want to move forward, and then I think we can talk about it then, with that in mind.
Madam Chairwoman, I would suggest that you also look at whether you're going to be creating a commission or a committee.
Yeah, I was, I was not sure about the language, can you describe for me the difference between a commission and a committee?
I would have to do a little research, but off the top of my head, I would think a commission is set by either charter or ordinance, and a committee could be set by the council.
Okay, that makes sense.
So we could do a little research to provide you that information.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Another quick comment, I might suggest that we look into maybe a policy that if or when we run into a scenario like this and it's determined that we're not going to pay the full amount, or whatever the case may be, that there's some mechanism so that it's, all the proper people are informed.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So there's no question on what's being done or not done.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's a great idea. Yep, a comment?
Okay, do we, do we have a motion to postpone discussion on, on Agenda Item K?
Still moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
I was going to make that motion, okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Item L, would you read that one, please?
Yes.
Did we vote on it? I've lost track. All those in favor of postponing?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously.
I make a motion for discussion and possible action to form a committee of citizens of the town to oversee the spending of bonded funds to ensure the original intent of the funds remains clear over the course of 20 years. Committee members must be unelected and unanimously approved by the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak to it first. I don't think it would be legal. I don't think we can have other people coming in and overseeing what our finance department is doing and telling them how to, to, whether they approve of it or don't approve of it. I think our finance department is giving us very accurate monthly reports, the town manager has given us a very detailed reports on, on what's occurring, and I couldn't support that in any form or shape or form.
Through the chair, I also wouldn't be in favor of it, especially when it comes to the bonding aspect. There's already a lot of mechanisms in place that if we're saying we're going to use it for a certain purpose, we have to. Additional citizen oversight, I don't think would really add any value there. And keep in mind that the funds aren't really truly expensed over those 20 years, they're expensed, you know, day one when we pay off Waterbury. If we're dealing with water and sewer, any bond for that matter, when we use them, they're used then, we pay them off over the next 20 years.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking more along the lines of, say, the road bonds, where we might not necessarily be using those funds initially all at once.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.